I want to call to order the July 12, 2022 regularly scheduled board meeting for the Richland Two Board of Trustees. If I can please have a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move that we convene in executive session for the purpose of legal advice regarding IG's investigation and student appeals.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Teresa Holmes. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now convene into executive session. Thank you. At this time, I want to open up the public hearing for the FY 22 2023 general fund budget. Well, actually, I guess I need to go ahead and do the motion to come out of executive session. Do I have enough? Okay. If I can have the motion in executive session.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move that the record reflect that executive session was concluded at 6:15 p.m. today.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Teresa Holmes. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, are we all with a hand vote, Christine? Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Raise it high, please. Or raise a hand. Thank you. Motion passes five to, or six to zero. Let the record reflect that Mrs. McFadden is not present for the vote. I will now open it up to the public hearing for the fiscal year 2022 2023 general fund budget. At this time, I have two individuals signed up to speak. I'll start with Mr. Gary Ginn, please, if you'll come forward to the mic.
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Ginn, and about the budget, I would hope that you all would consider the, I saw where the teachers, there's going to be a reduction in teachers in the budget, if that's correct. And I would hope that you all would select to return that teachers back to normal amount of teachers that we have, where our kids can have proper teachers in their classrooms for this coming year. Last year, I know there was a lot of teachers missing and out for long periods of time, and there was a lot of gym time and dayroom time in class in schools last year. Couple of teachers missed, out of 18 weeks, they missed eight weeks of that time. Thank you for hearing me.
Next, I have Mr. Patrick Kelly, if you please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Board. My name is Patrick Kelly, and while I've spoken to you in the past in a multitude of roles, I'm here tonight as a Richland Two parent. While I've taught in this district since 2005, my wife and I didn't move to this community until 2009, in large part because once we became parents, we knew we wanted our daughter to attend school in Richland Two. While so many elements made and continue to make this a great community to raise a family, as an educator, I deeply appreciated one thing above all else, that in Richland Two, the priority was always on three words, teaching and learning. As you consider this year's proposed budget, I ask you to continue to prioritize teaching and learning. As the old political adage goes, you don't ask somebody what their priorities are, you look at their budget, and then you know what the priorities are. And in recent years, this district's budget has prioritized teaching and learning, perhaps none more so than last year when you approved significant salary increases for Richland Two employees. And I know this is especially challenging for you to do in light of state policies like Act 388. And for that reason, I don't believe it's insignificant, the modest pay raises that are included in this year's budget. But as a parent that wants to raise my children in a district with the very best teaching and learning, I ask you to push the envelope and look for ways to do more. I make this ask for two reasons. Number one, research consistently shows that the number one in-school factor on student achievement is the quality of the teacher in the classroom. But as was just indicated, across this state, too many students are currently lacking access to any teacher, more or less a qualified teacher. In February 2022, there were 1,121 vacant teaching positions in this state, a number fueled by 977 mid-year resignations. There was a time where Richland Two was immune to the effect of teacher shortages, but given the sheer scope of the current shortage, we're not immune anymore. The other reason I make this ask is because Richland Two is in danger of being caught and falling behind on educator salaries. Last year, we jumped far ahead of our Midlands peers when you raised starting teacher salary to $41,000. But this year, Lex One, Lex Two, and Lex Rich Five have already announced budgets that will bring them within $400 of the starting salary in your budget. Lex Two is doing that by providing a $2,300 pay raise to every teacher, and Lex Rich Five is providing a $2,500 per year retention bonus to teachers in their first three years. Statewide, the story is the same. Greenville and Ori are raising teacher salaries by $2,000 in steps to year 30 and beyond, and Berkeley is, Beaufort, sorry, is providing a $4,000 pay raise to every teacher, with starting salaries in excess of $45,000. In this job market, Richland Two faces greater challenges than ever to ensure every child has access to a world-class education. I ask this board to continue to work to find ways to ensure Richland Two remains a premier place of employment for our state's educators. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I have no one else signed up, but at this time, if there's anybody else that would like to come before the board, I would ask you to come forward now. All right. With that, we will close the public hearing on the general fund budget for the 2022 2023 general fund budget year. We'll now move on to the inspirational moment and the pledge of allegiance. For the inspirational moment tonight, I'm just going to ask us to take a moment of silence and reflect on the decision that we have in front of us tonight with the budget, the impact to the community, and the work that we have to do this evening. So with that, we're going to take a moment of silence at this time. We'll now do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I can now have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the agenda for the July 12 regular board meeting.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. With the approval of the agenda, we'll move on to item six, the consent agenda. If I can please have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the July 12 2022 regular board meeting.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. We'll now move on to public participation. I have first signed up Mr. Gary Ginn, if you please come forward.
I thank you all for hearing me today. I came, come here and to speak to you all about the dress code, which I hear is up for announcement. I think that, I wish that you all would reconsider your dress code allotments today because I think that if you're positioning kids or students to go to work every day, there's always dress codes in the, in the people that are going to employ them, that are probably not what they're going to like sometimes, but they must participate on those dress codes. On January 25, this Board of Trustees denied me the opportunity as a parent, taxpayer, and community of the residents of the district to interact at any level with our school district due to a trespass notice that was publicly placed upon me unfairly and illegally on me. This situation occurred because of an incident before that school board meeting, and explained to you by the superintendent of education coming at me and the superintendent's wife. While I'm still baffled on these actions, I'm proud that I represented thousands of parents in this district, white, black, Hispanic, and every other nationality in this district, by standing up to the bullying tactics of this district. It's unfortunate that these disturbing actions are the result of elected leaders of the school district. Rather than to educate the student, children, and be an example with this entrusted power, it has become a den of insidication, threats, and use of executive, legal, and law enforcement power to silence parents. This is not the type of respect parents, taxpayers, and citizens of this district should expect and deserve. I will continue to fight for the rights of all parents in this district and to speak up and be heard. Thank you.
Next, I have Mr. Larry Smalls, if you please come forward to the mic.
Good evening. I'm here to discuss the amending of the policy JICA student attire. Because my time is limited, I will briefly quote the old policy and later briefly summarize my concerns regarding the new policy change. The current policy reads, "Richland County School District Two students are expected," I want you to catch these words, "to dress, be groomed, or otherwise conduct themselves in such a way as to not distract or cause disruption in the educational program or orderly operation of the school. Personal appearance and conduct of students should promote health and safety, contribute to a climate conducive to teaching and learning, and project a positive image of the district and the community." Let me summarize that old policy in my own words. The dress code or personal appearance should promote a socially healthy and safe environment as well as a, as well as project a positive image of the home, the district, and most of all, the student. The conduct of the student should contribute to a climate conducive to teaching and learning without time-consuming distractions or senseless disruptions that would encumber an orderly operation of the school. Can any of you tell me what is wrong with civility and order? Socially, is that not the basis of a healthy society? Now, the new policy. It is the mission of Richland County School District Two to develop a global citizen of, global citizens of tomorrow. I thought the mission of the district is to educate our kids. We are the United States of America, not a global nation. Do we not pledge the allegiance to the United States of America, the flag? Again, the new policy. In relation to student attire, this district believes students have a right to be treated equitably. Enforcement of this policy will not create disparities, reinforce, or increase marginalization of any group, nor will it be more strictly enforced against the students because of racial identity, ethnicity, gender identity, gender expression, gender nonconformity, sexual orientation, et cetera, et cetera. I have a short time. Why are these legal terms, rights, equity, being used regarding a dress code? After all, these kids are not wearing a uniform. The issue is a social-political ideology to further indoctrinate our kids into believing that their gender identity is fluid. If this is the case, and if we're holding to this position, the sciences such as biology and anatomy, are they no longer viable? I implore you to not change the policy. Order is needed in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. We'll now move on to, I have no further public participation. We'll move on to item 8 dot one, student appeals. If I can please have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
For student one, my motion is to deny the appeal.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a clarifying question. For these kids that are up for expulsion, if they're expelled, is it, for example, if it happened in May, would their expulsion now be discontinued because we're in a new school year? Is that question clear? Or are they expelled for the 2022-2023 school year?
So you're asking not about this particular student, but just a general question?
Just in general.
About expulsion and?
Yes.
Dr. Davis, I don't know if, if you can readily answer that.
The student would be expelled for the upcoming school year. Mr. Smith, is that correct? Thank you.
So, so a student that's had infraction in May of 2022 is going to be expelled for the whole 2022-2023 school year?
Well, Mrs. Agostini, the way you stated that, you said a student who is, it, it points to a specific student. I'd like to refrain from that.
Well, there are two students. I'm just saying in general, I don't mean a, I don't mean a specific student. I'm just asking, if somebody gets expelled for an incident that happened before the school year got out?
I think we would need to, to look at individual cases to understand when the event occurred, what, what, when it comes before the board. My understanding is there's lots of potential issues depending on when parents submit appeals and timing of infractions and lots of factors that go into that. So I, at this time, if we have something relevant to the student, I'd like to stick to that. If you have general questions about the expulsion process, I'd ask you get with staff later to get those answered.
Well, I, I think it's really pertinent for the people that are up, or even that were up the last time, you know? You know, is the expulsion going to be, that's for the whole next school year, these people today?
And that was the answer that was given, yes. They would be expelled for the, the, if they, depending on the issue, how long, if they're expelled, under typical expulsion, it's a 45-day, unless the board recommends a longer expulsion period, or if there's a weapon involved, where it's a year round. No, that's not right.
All right. So not?
Just for a point of clarification, Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Yeah. Go ahead, Dr. Davis.
There are a lot of factors that weigh into this, when the student, there are many factors that would weigh into the situation. If a student commits an infraction on the last day of school, that student then will be expelled, could be expelled for the following school year. And if a fraction is committed and the student hadn't had an opportunity to, an opportunity to serve, or the expulsion was not served because of the appeal process, it is when the decision is made, the expulsion is finalized, expulsion then will be for the upcoming school year. Expulsions are based on infractions. Infractions are typically, expulsions are typically, recommendations for expulsions are typically for level two and level three offenses. So we don't take those, those offenses lightly, but the timing does have a factor in it. So yes, a student who doesn't, commits an infraction in December may be expelled for the remainder of the school year. A student who commits an infraction two days before graduation may be expelled for the upcoming, the upcoming school year for that infraction. It's, it's unfortunate, but it's, it's not quite equal all year long. A student commits an infraction in the first nine weeks of school is expelled for the second, third, and fourth nine weeks. A student who commits an infraction in the second nine weeks can be expelled for the third and fourth nine weeks. Student may commit an infraction in the third nine weeks could be expelled for the fourth nine weeks, the remainder of the school year. If an event happens at the very end of the school year, then expulsion is for the upcoming school years, is the way that it has typically been.
Thank you, Dr. And I apologize, you're, I was, I'm sorry, I confused Blythewood Academy with the 45-day and expulsion, so I apologize for my misstatement, but Dr. Davis clarified it. So with that, I'd like to move on with the vote for the student. I have a motion in a second, and we'll take the vote at this time. Motion passes five, yes, one, no, and one abstention. We will now move on to student number two, if I can have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
My motion is to deny the appeal and recommend the student for consideration to pathways to promotion.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Agostini, or, I'm sorry, by Mrs. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? Motion passes six, yes, one abstention. There's no further student appeal, so we will move item 8 dot two. There's no other items in executive session needed for discussion, so we will now move on to item 9 dot one, the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget second reading.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, you have before you the proposed budget for the 23, 20, the 22-23 school year. We've asked and brought to you in last, our last board meeting, the first reading, and now we're asking for a motion for the approval of the 22-23 budget for the upcoming school year.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the budget for the 2022-2023 fiscal year.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
Yeah, I'm, and I just want to express concerns. You know, we talk so much about safety, and I look at this $114,000, and we've spent a lot of time with the safety committee. To me, it looks like that we're not focusing, or we're not putting a much, as much emphasis that I feel that we need to on the safety. And additionally, just hearing these two people come up and speak during public participation, or, excuse me, during the budget hearing, that doesn't give the board time to cycle through the information that was given to us and take it into consideration as we are doing this budget. And finally, unless I missed it in the notes, I was hoping to see the teacher salary schedule and all, I saw last year's, but I want to see what it looks like and what actually does it mean. I was contacted by a few teachers this afternoon, late this afternoon, asking for the $4,000 increase and for the board to consider that. I'm guessing that other people received similar emails for that consideration as well. So I would like for us actually to take more time and look at what an actual salary schedule is going to look like for all of our employees prior to approving this budget.
Other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Ms. McFadden?
So I did receive an email, you know, about what we should and shouldn't, you know, try to change during this budget cycle. However, we just received a brand-new educational funding model, and we have not went through it at all. I have asked on several occasions for us to have a meeting to go through it, to see if there's possibility that we could have some extra money or allocate or earmark some funds. And like Ms. Agostini said, you know, and the people who came up for public budget to speak on the budget and what they like, we can have another opportunity, another meeting, to cipher through this, to comb through it a little more, in my opinion. Still earmarking funds, it's still a challenge. I asked for a breakdown, I did get a breakdown, but the main items that I was asking about that were a major surplus, I didn't get that number for that. So I'm just saying, I mean, they're not prepared tonight, I don't think, to, to come up and speak on it. Seems like it's already a done deal. And I say that because there's not an opportunity right now for us to have another, further discussion about it. I asked for a meeting before, because we only had one week after the last meeting, and we were on break for a whole week. We come back Monday, and then the board meeting's today, so there was really no time to have another meeting. So I'm going to request again, if it's the appropriate time, to make a motion that we again postpone this a couple of days to go through this, to set up a meeting for us to comb, comb through the new educational funding model to get a better understanding before we vote on this. Is this appropriate time to make a secondary motion?
You can, if you like, yes.
I'd like to make a secondary motion that we postpone this and allow the board to have another meeting to comb through the educational funding model, the new one, so we can see exactly what we're talking about. We're responsible for over $300 million budget, and I don't know what it looks like, the new one that came out.
Yeah, Mrs. McFadden, unfortunately, that's not, not an appropriate secondary motion. It would have to, to kind of undo the primary motion, goes one step too far for a secondary motion, so we'd have to take action on the first motion before that motion would be relevant.
Okay, I'd like to amend the first motion, please.
Okay, but I, you can't amend the first motion with undoing the motion. It would have to be something in addition to or a slight change. It can't be a complete, like, removal or change of the primary motion.
Yes, sir. Since you know the process, would you please do it for me, or explain it to me exactly what I need to say?
I, no, I know what you're asking for. I'm not sure how to do it because the motion is...
Who made the motion?
Dr. Scott, do you have, would you like to speak, or? If you'll, if you'll hit your mic.
Would the person who made the motion, would you welcome an amendment to it?
If the motion fails, you're welcome to make a secondary motion, but my motion to approve the budget for the 2022-23 fiscal year, I do want to be voted on. If it fails, then you're welcome to make another motion.
Okay, so I just want to be clear that, you know, nine times out of 10 with this vote, we may not have an opportunity to do that. And I would really like for this board to consider, let's take in the time to look through this before we make a vote on this, and see where we can get money for more teacher raises and for security, because right now, there's only $113,000, $14,000. And I don't think, especially with the quote that we made, that was made for if we wanted to get metal detectors, if we even wanted to look at it, it's not going to be a possibility. We only have $114,000 left.
I, I want to just make a couple of comments. One, we did have an, and I know, Dr. Scott, I've got you next, but we, the, the change to the, the formula, the budget formula, we, we've received multiple times from district administration, Dr. Miley and Ms. Allen have come up multiple times and explained the difference. The, the key change that occurred was the mandate for the increase versus the... The, uh, the, the key change that occurred was the mandate for the increase versus the, uh, versus the flexibility, but the, the formula itself didn't change from what was, what's been presented to us multiple times.
Yes, sir. But once it was adopted, we didn't go back to review what was changed. We didn't get an, an update of that.
We, we did. We were told that the change was that we no longer were mandated to give a raise to teachers, which would have put us thirteen million dollars in a shortfall, but rather gave us flexibility to, uh, to not do the mandated, or not do the increase across the board so that we could have a balance. It gave us the opportunity to have a balanced budget.
I'm not necessarily speaking about our individual budget at that, at this point, the way that, I'm talking about the weighted averages and all that, how it factors into our budget. You're talking about the, the final budget that comes here. I'm talking about the way we got there. We haven't discussed that as far as the, you know, weighted people averages and things like that, that they discussed with us. We have not been through that. I'm talking about the overhaul of the funding budget is what I'm discussing. I would just like to ha, I'm just requesting, before we take this vote, that we have a, a meeting with the board members to discuss it. And that is my motion and I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Dr. Scott?
My question is for Dr. Davis. Dr. Davis, what is the timeline to have this budget approved? Because I just don't want us to fall into not being able to get it approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Scott. Um, we need to get the budget approved because the longer we take to approve the budget, I can have Dr. Miley or Ms. Allen come and be with more specifics, but our employees will not receive their raises probably until sometime until September if we delay the, the approval of the budget. And in addition to asking it to add, address an additional question, ESER funds are available for us, uh, to look at safety and security and we have been reviewing, have to resubmit, um, our, uh, our proposal for our ESER funds, but we are able to use ESER funds for safety and security. The sixty, the hundred and fourteen thousand dollars that you see in this budget is simply general fund money, but there are other available funds for us to use for safety and security upgrades. I will remind for the public of what you see when the numbers from other school districts is, is things that we have already done through our bond money. So we have, we do also have an opportunity to use bond money to continue to upgrade for safety and security when it comes to the purchase of metal detectors and other things, but we have done many of those upgrades that other school districts may be looking to do now as it relates to bullet resistant glass, as it relates to bullet resistant, uh, drywalls, uh, uh, drywalling issues, camera issues, safety on our buses and, and changing our, the entry locations, badging systems to get in and out of our facilities. We have upgraded and updated those things, um, prior to this issue, what we're looking to address as though internal threats that could possibly exist, where individuals who are, um, who are supposed to be on our campuses may bring something to campus that they're not, but we have the funding to do that outside of the general fund, um, amount. We were only given sixteen, um, we have an overage of about sixteen, uh, an increase of about sixteen million dollars. Unfortunately, uh, when it comes to increasing teacher pay, right now, it would, uh, one percentage point would, would, it would come to about one point six million dollars. So for each percentage point that we go up, um, we, um, as was stated earlier, we did a very proactive job of increasing teacher pay last year. Prior to that, many of the school districts who were able to increase their teacher pay are getting assistance from the state because they weren't already at forty thousand dollars. We had already surpassed that and, um, it, with the foresight of, of the board to, to pass, pass that last year, but it would take about one point six million dollars per percentage. So if we go from two percent to three percent increase, it'll be an additional one point six million dollars. To go from one, from two percent to four percent will be about three point two million dollars, which we do not have. We did ask for, just to, and I'll wrap this up, because we did ask and try to get, uh, a millage increase. We were not granted a millage increase. A millage increase would have given us the opportunity in our original proposal. We had a better or more increase for our teachers, but we weren't granted a millage increase at this time and therefore we were unable to do this. This is the money that we, this, the sixteen million dollars is what we have. And as you can see, a large percentage of this money, um, this budgeted money for our general fund is at a zero mil increase and the vast majority of it is a prior, issues of priority, of mandated prior obligations and contractual obligations, with very few line items that are dedicated to things we want to do and each, pretty much all of the line items that we can or have some input on is an increase in compensation for our employees.
Dr. Holmes?
Um, yes. Um, I do share the concern with, um, a lot of our colleagues because I was in the same position about the teachers that are at a certain level, like if they're twenty-eight years above or thirty years above, I do realize that with, that it does, the increase does help younger teachers and teachers who are just starting out, but I do think that we still have to, at some later date, we have got to, we have got to look back at finding a way to do something for the teachers who are at the, the twenty-eight level year and above, because I think that that would be only fair because we need to probably do that. Having said that, I do understand the constraints that we're up under tonight. We have to pass this budget because of a time constraint. We have to pass this budget so, and in order for those teachers to get their new increase for the upcoming school year. So it's not a situation where, um, the rest of the board members don't understand that there are some holes in the budget. We understand that and we understand that we want teachers to get more money. I was a teacher, I was an educator, I did it for thirty-five years and I was, I, I got to the point where I was at that cutoff point. So I know what it's like to be at that cutoff point and you feel like you're not getting anything extra. So I think that we do, at some point after we pass this budget, if it was not understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Davis, we did have the leeway to, after we pass this budget and we find out what remaining money we have, we can go back in and do something different. Is that not correct?
The budget can, the budget can always be amended. Um, just for clarification pers, purposes, the state, I think salary scale goes to like twenty-three or twenty-four years.
Twenty-three, mhm.
We carry our salary scale to, I believe, forty-five years. Teachers that, that are above that twenty-three year period or twenty-eight year mark, they're banded together. So those sales, each of those steps, those ban steps do get a raise, a two percent increase. So if that ban is a twenty-eight to twenty-nine ban or a thirty to thirty-one ban, that, that range gets that step, um, for those who qualify, um, those teachers who qualify for those, those employees who qualify for that step. I just want to reiterate that we took a huge step and I appreciate, um, the comments that were made in, um, the, uh, in the beginning of the meeting. We took a huge step before the state took the step to be active in, um, compensating our teachers, going from thirty-seven thousand to forty-one thousand last year. That was a huge step for us and we were able to do that. Um, this year to do an additional four thousand dollars would have, as Mr. Manning stated, put us at about a twelve million dollar deficit, a, a twelve million dollar deficit in the school district, particularly since we are doing, this budget is based off a zero mil increase.
Right.
Had we gotten, and got a millage increase, we may be able to do more, may have been able to do more for our teachers this year, but we don't have that as an option. So this is, budget is based off of that millage increase and it limits us in our ability to be able to do those things. Some of the other districts that have been mentioned, for example, I believe Burke, Beaufort County, um, was mentioned earlier, they got a four mil increase in Beaufort County.
Right.
To be able to do the things that they needed to do. Some districts have fiscal autonomy to be able to do the things that they needed to do. We do not have that and so we have sixteen additional million dollars above our budget from last year and in that, we prioritize that by ensuring that our teachers got at least a two percent increase and a step. The two percent increase came to three point two million of the sixteen million dollars just for teachers. And if you look at that, it's also eight hundred thousand dollars in this for other employees, uh, and salary scales. Um, it is a three million dollar in savings that we're anticipating, a staff turnover savings. There's an increase for our instructional aides, which we made a prior obligation last year when we gave the teachers, the, when we went from thirty-seven thousand to forty-one thousand for teachers, that we heard from our instructional aides and we made a priority to ensure that our instructional aides were taken care of, which is at a tune of four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars to ensure that. We have to make sure that we take, we, we took care of our, uh, maintenance and our custodial salaries as well. We have classified staff, um, that we have addressed in this budget as well, which gives us the sixteen million, six point eight, sixteen point eight million dollars. Again, and I reiterate this, that this is based off of zero mil increase and, uh, I think the budget is a balanced budget, um, with the limited resources that we have and I think we were tasked or asked to consider, how can we continue to be premier in this being a premier place to live and work, um, for our teachers? And I think we can do that and I think you all have done that last year before everyone else, but yes, we need to be mindful that other districts have been able to catch up to us because of the aid and the support they have gotten from the state.
Okay, um, let me, one more, Mr. Manning.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I agree with everything about that, Dr. Davis, because we all voted for that and I am in agreement with that. Um, again, um, we are above, we were already above the state. I already knew that, so I want the teachers to realize that we were already there. It makes it look like we're not giving the same raise for the younger teachers, but we were already there. So I understand that and I appreciate that and I know we've done everything to move, we've all voted to move everybody's salary, because everybody, it's a tough year. Everybody needs a raise and I, I am all for everybody getting their money because of you work hard, because I know what you do, because I did it too. So I understand that. Um, like I said, I'm going to vote for this budget because I know we need to vote for this budget. We've got to make sure that people get that percentage, but I just wanted to put it out there that there is still a concern for teachers who are of a certain age and a certain number of years, that if there's any windfall of any money as we go forward, that we, we can have an opportunity perhaps go back and look at that, because while we're, while we're helping our younger teachers, we want to make sure we keep retaining our more mature teachers and our more experienced teachers. And with that, that's, that's basically where I wanted to go with that. I think that this is a balanced budget. I think that we have tried our best last year and are doing our best this year to try to increase everybody's salary. Dr. Davis, thank you for that very detailed explanation as to how the money went to make these increases and that at least we've got two percent, but I wanted to put it out there that for teachers of mature levels, that we make sure that they don't start lagging behind with only a two percent every year. That's, that's all I wanted to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott.
Thank you for coming back to me. I was just going to say, um, with the budget that we have in place, I will support this because I do understand that we have the flexibility later on to go back to give teachers bonuses and raises, so I will be, um, supporting this. And I think all the educators and the parents and the community members know that I'm pro teacher all the way, one hundred percent, but I do believe in the budget that we have before us tonight, so I will be supporting that, but I also will be a cheerleader for you, that if we have any monies left, that we give you guys some bonuses. So thank you for your support in advance. Thank you.
All right, other board members, questions or comments? Mrs. Agostini?
Yes, and thank you, um, Mr. Chair, and I will not be supporting tonight. I like Ms. McFadden's idea of postponing this vote. Um, we do have a continuing resolution already in place. I do realize the importance of getting something through so that teachers get their, um, increase and our employees do quickly, but I don't think that we should do it in light of, you know, thoroughly looking at this. I would have liked to have had the salary schedules to see what it actually looks like, um, for the upcoming vote. Again, I express my concern about, um, the school's security and safety initiatives, the hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. While I'm glad to hear that we will look at different areas, um, to source funding for things like as metal detectors and capital equipment, um, it's my understanding that we can't use the funds. Maybe we could use the ESER funds for personnel, but a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars does not seem, um, like the amount of money we need to use human resources or, that can support human resources to address our safety issues. Thank you.
All right, other board members? Um, I, I would like to say I, um, I understand that the plea for safety, I, I think until we have a plan and understand what our needs are, has been stated, we can come back, look at the budget, if we need more human capital, uh, this board and district administration can do a deep dive to determine if we have the funds available to meet the needs, but we as a board have not determined what those needs are at this time. So to say it's underfunded when we don't understand what the needs are, I think is a, my opinion is, is a, um, a difficult stretch, uh, when we haven't made a final decision on safety and security in the district. Um, I also just wanted to correct one other thing. I think earlier we heard that we were reducing the number of teachers in the district. Uh, this budget does not reduce the number of teachers. Um, the, uh, the three million dollars in savings is not from cutting teachers, but rather from sort of a rolling, ongoing, open number of positions that our staff feels comfortable to say aren't filled throughout the year, so it's an attrition number, not a decrease in teachers, in teaching staff or staffs. I just wanted to make sure that folks didn't think that we were cutting teaching positions in this budget. Motion passes five yes, one no, and one abstention. We will now move on to the, uh, ten dot one, Richland Two highlights. Dr. Davis.
Hey, Mr. Manning, Mr. Chair and members of the board, to our community and viewing us today is, uh, the district highlights begins with learning as the cornerstone of our core values. Dual enrollment options are expanded in Richland Two for juniors and seniors and a memorandum of agreement between Richland, between Richland Two and South Carolina State University will provide more high school students the opportunity to earn college credit while still attending high schools. Students with a, a definite educational plan beyond high school and those who are still unsure about their future will have a chance to gain college experience. Dual credit courses, including college courses offered on the college campus, online and at the high school or the career center. The district and South Carolina State University will share tuition costs. Parents and students are responsible for textbooks and supplies. Courses begin in August. The district's registers office will host a series of annual registration nights for families who need assistance with the online registration process for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. We encourage all families to complete this process as soon as possible. The information provided by parents, such as bus transportation requests, are very important to a successful start of the school year. Appointments are required for the annual registration nights. Visit richlandtwo.org/ARN for dates, times, and details on how to register. The character portion of my report highlights a student athlete who has maintained a three point three-three GPA while volunteering in her community and making history at her school. For the first time ever, Westwood High School is the home to the Gatorade South Carolina Girls Track and Field Player of the Year. Brianna Rodriguez, a five foot eight junior, won four events at the Class Four A State Meet this past season, leading the Red Hawks to a four A state runner-up finish. Brianna broke the tape in the two hundred meter run, the one hundred meter high hurdles, the four hundred meter imme, intermediate hurdles, and also ran the anchor leg on, of Westwood's winning four by four hundred meter relay team. The Gatorade Player of the Year recognize, recognizes not only outstanding athletic excellence, but also high standards of academic achievement and exemplary character demonstrated on and off the field. Brianna has volunteered locally as a youth track coach and she has d, donated her time to multiple community service initiatives through her church. She is now a finalist for the prestigious Gatorade National Girls Track and Field Player of the Year award to be announced later this month. In the area of community, this is a reminder to students up, up to the age of eighteen, Richland Two is providing summer meals at four school location. Free breakfast and lunch are served Monday through Thursday, seven forty-five AM to eight thirty AM and eleven AM to twelve thirty PM. The service sites are Bridge Creek Elementary, Dent Middle, Jackson Creek Elementary, and Killian Elementary. The meals must be consumed on-site. All meals sites are closed on Fridays. The last day to receive the free meals is Thursday, July the twenty-eighth. We're getting closer to the start of the new school year. The district will be hosting a back-to-school bash here at R2I2. The bash will be Saturday, August thirteenth, from ten AM to noon. The first day of school is the following Wednesday, August the seventeenth. And now for some joy. Former Forest Lake Elementary Principal, Richland Two Retiree, Dr. Cappy Stack is one of four school leaders from across the state, selected by the South Carolina Association of Administrators as a twenty twenty-two Lifetime Achievement Award winner. Dr. Stack dedicated her entire career to supporting and improving the educational environment in Richland Two, where she served as a classroom teacher, counselor, assistant principal, and later the principal. The majority of her career, twenty-eight years, was spent at Forest Lake Elementary School. Dr. Stack received several... Lake Elementary School. Dr. Stack received several notable honors during her distinguished career. She was named the South Carolina Elementary Principal of the Year by SCASA, the National Distinguished Principal, by the National Association of Elementary School Principals, a South Carolina Educational Office Professional Administrator of the Year, and a National Association of Office Professional Administrator of the Year. Magnet Schools of America named her the Region Four Principal of the Year, and she was a South Carolina Association of School Librarians Principal of the Year. She retired this past December. A Dent Middle School student competing at the National Beta Convention last month in Nashville, Tennessee, did not return home empty-handed. Caroline Brannys won second place in creative writing in the, in the Junior Beta Club competition. Her writing prompt was to use figurative and descriptive language in discussing what happened when a group of teenagers went into space and lost communications with Earth. Early in the school year, Caroline won first place in a category of creative writing and second place in eighth grade language arts at the state meet. And this concludes this board meeting for tonight's district highlights. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of our board and community for listening.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. We'll now move on to item 10 dot two, approval of policy revisions for policy JICI, student dress articles, displays. And I apologize for my southern accent on the JICA. The drawl is strong, sorry. If I can have a, well, there's no motion. Dr. Davis, if you can give us the highlights.
We ask to approve the revisions to policy JICA student dress articles and displays.
Board members, questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Sorry. No, there's no action requested. This is no, this is just for review, first review, so there's no action. I'm sorry. Uh, Dr. Scott?
Yes, I just need some clarification on the new written policy and just clarification just on this part that I'm going to read. It says, "In support of this mission, it is the policy of the district that students and their parents slash guardian hold the primary responsibility in determining this student's personal attire, hairstyle, jury, and personal items, collectively referred to as attire." And I just want more clarification. I thank you guys for coming up here. I just want more clarification of this because I can see, first of all, let me just say, I can respect the parents having choice and what their students will wear to school, but I can see this also as a problem with the schools if the kids are coming and they're dressed inappropriately. So where is the detail of what's appropriate and what's not? When I look at the original policy, I'm more in favor of that because it truly just outlines what the expectations are. But when I look at the new policy that we have, it's a little too vague for me to understand. And I guess more so, my concern would be, I don't want to have so many of our scholars coming before us for recommendation for expulsion because they've had too many dress code violations. So that's the concern for me. And then the other question would be, when you guys decided to write this policy, did you have input from all of the principals? Because I can't imagine a principal just being this vague, especially when they write students up because students are dressed inappropriately, rightfully so, to be not, maybe not written up, but having that conversation. So if you guys can just explain this a little more for me so I can try to get some buy-in, because right now, I am not in favor of this policy, but I'd like to hear your thoughts on it.
If I could interrupt real briefly, I did, I would be, I'd be remiss. I didn't offer Mr. Smith or give time for Mr. Smith, Dr. Grant, and Catherine Milburn, Burn, who's an 11th grader at Ridgeview High School and a Scholars Academy Magnet for Business and Law, to come before you all, to present to you all the policy and be able to answer those questions. So I do apologize for that mishap. So I will turn it over to Dr. Grant, to young Mrs. Milburn, and to Mr. Smith to address any questions the board may have in regards to our new policy.
Well, let me start with the young lady, the young student, because I, I'd love to hear from her. What's your thoughts on this policy? Were you a part of the committee that created this policy? And help me get some buy-in. I'd love to hear from young folks.
Um, so I did not, like, help write the new draft myself, but my program specifically gave us the opportunity to choose something that we wanted to better about the district. My group wanted to change the dress code. So I have talked to Dr. Grant before multiple times about what I felt was wrong with the dress code and what I felt needed to be changed. So I am in agreeance with the new draft of the dress code and I think that it is much improved and will help the district a lot in moving towards, you know, being more inclusive and making students feel safer. And yeah, I think it's very important for a district that strives for, you know, positive interactions between students and staff.
Thank you so much. Now, if I can get the others just to address my concern about the other school administrators and the referrals and what exactly is the new policy? Are we saying that students can come now with tank tops or they can come with many dresses on, belly pierced? I mean, because this does not say this. This leaves it totally up to students and parents.
That's a good question, Dr. Scott. And to answer your question, we also provided information to the board in regards to the administrative rule. And inside the administrative rule, it specifies about the different steps, what's allowed and what's not allowed. So...
Thank you so much for that. But that's in the administrative rule. What's there for parents and community members and for students to see? Because they're not going to have the administrative rule. So when we're talking about the student handbook, what would be in the handbook and would it have the same dress code across the board? Where would Ridgeview have one dress code and Richland Northeast have another dress code and Middle School have another dress code? So what you're asking us to adopt is a policy across Richland Two District, and then you're going to insert the administrative rule in, as part of this?
Yes.
Okay, see, that did not clarify this. Thank you for that. That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
And the other part of your question, you asked about who was involved in the process. We shared this information with principals, other administrators. We also shared it with faculty advisory council, the parent advisory council. We also got input from students. Dr. Grant and I went out to different schools. Matter of fact, our student here, Catherine's class was one of the ones that we went to and gathered input from as we went to come up with how to draft this policy. So we did vet it with principals, building level principals, other building level administrators, as well as other administrators in the district.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Um, sorry, let me get, I'll get Ms. McFadden. Can I ask one question? And you said you sent us the administrative rule. Can you tell us how you sent that to us?
We, in, in your board brief, the last board brief, the administrative rule is attached to that.
So it was in the previous board brief, not this one?
It's in this one and the previous one. It's in, in both of them, the one in June and the one in July.
Okay, I'm sure other board members maybe had that question too, but, Ms. McFadden, go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to kind of be clear about what this policy is saying. For instance, I tell my daughter, she can't wear a halter top, spaghetti straps to school, but the clothes that are being made are made that way. And administration at the school is like, oh, it's okay, it's all right, you know, don't, don't wear it too short, you know, their skin showing around her mid-area. As her mother, I've said, you can't wear that. When she gets to school, school says, it's okay. But no one's going to be there to monitor whether or not these children are changing clothes to fit, you know, fit in with their friends or whatever they want to wear. And I want to understand that there is guidelines in place that say that you can't wear this particular thing, you know, spaghetti straps have to be certain length, covering the bras, those kind of things. I also want to understand that if I tell my son, he doesn't wear stockings and skirts to school, he doesn't go to school and change into stockings and skirts, and those kind of things. And that is ultimately up to the parents to decide what their children wear. And when they, what the parents send their children to school in, the expectation is, is that that was what that child will wear throughout the entire day, regardless of how they feel about what they want to be or whatever. If I send my son to school in pants, in sweatpants or a sweatshirt, that's what I expect him to wear all day. Not because he feels a certain way, he's going to put on a miniskirt. I just want to be clear that this district is, this is not what this policy is saying. And I don't feel like we have guidelines for that. When I read this, and I'm sure when others have read it, I just want to be clear that what we're saying and what we're not saying.
I'll, I'll address that question. Thank you, Mrs. Smith and, and, and Dr. Grant. Our attempt in this policy is for our policies to be inclusive of our students. I've been an administrator in this district since 1999. I've had boys in 1999 that wear skirts to school before. We didn't make them change. That's not our role and responsibility as school administrators to enforce the values of every individual family because they may differ. Where one family may say, you can't do something, you can't wear this. Another family may say, you can do that and I accept you for this and that. That's an individual family decision. Our roles and responsibilities is to try to create a safe environment for our students to learn and feel comfortable in. And the dress code is one of those things that has and continues to be, since a place of contention. The South, for example, this is a very agrarian example, I guess, a very, very simplistic example. Wearing a hat in the building is a Southern gentleman tradition. If you go out west, you go up north, kids aren't being written up and given suspensions or detentions for wearing hats in buildings. But that's a dress code expectation. There has been a dress code expectation in the South. And as an administrator, I've given many detentions for students wearing hats in the building. That's something that's a Southern tradition. That's a geographical dress code issue. But our responsibility here is simply just to create an environment where, one, it is being inclusive of parents who want to have a say. So this is a responsibility for parents and the students to come to some understanding what their expectations are. But we don't want to be punishing students or giving students a dress code violation because we may disagree with their choice of dress unless that choice of dress is distracting or disruptive or whatever inappropriate to, to, in, in a sense. The administrative rule, just like in the previous policy, is separate. There is an administrative rule. When you look at this policy, you look at our current policy, you have to go to the administrative rule and it is available to the public, to any parent, to any student who wants to see the administrative rule as it is currently written now, that is very specific in what you can and cannot do. And that's where we will put those things in place here as well. We're not eliminating administrative rule. There may be some, there's maybe some adjustments to the administrative rule, but we're not eliminating those things. So yes, there may be a time where, you know, we may have, students may have received a detention, or you got administrators doing the three, the three, the three finger length test of a girl's skirt. And that could be seen as inappropriate as well. And many of us who've been around know that that has been an issue in some, sometimes in schools. So we're looking to remove some of those things, but we're not at all trying to create a space or environment where students are walking around wearing whatever they want to wear and being inappropriate. But we do want to step into, in the 21st century, I would imagine, when it comes to dress and attire, I've been listening earlier, I remember a time that you could only wear a blue and, a blue and a black and gray suit to work, or that you only had to, you had to wear a tie to work. But you can go into the work environment now if you are in tech and you don't have to put on a suit and tie every day to be in conform, to conform with the dress code. So those are, those are the things that we're looking to do, but no, ma'am, not at all. So you will see that administrative rule. I would say compare the administrative rule that is currently in place and the new administrative rules for you to get some comfort on where we are going when it comes to actually the enforcement of the dress code.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. And I'm, I'm working my way around each of these, Dr. Holmes.
Okay, I'd like to say, I am glad to see this student here with this diversity group because I have received many, many, many emails about the dress code. And one thing I've often said is, I love when I see students become active in what, what's important to them. So I'm certainly glad to see you here. In addition to that, I love the fact that this new dress code provides for diversity. And that's just not diversity of color. It's also for sexual orientation and other factors. I think that we are living in a time where we have to be mindful that everyone does not think the same and everyone does not look the same. And we have to respect that. It's about respecting each other. So for me, I'm glad to see that because as a former administrator, I had to send many students home for the two finger test, which I thought was absolutely ridiculous because they needed to be in class. But my, so my point is, I don't want to get so hung up on the dress code, but of course, having said that before, somebody says, oh, she's all liberal. No, there should be a conformity of certain items. We all know that. You can't come to school with nothing, basically nothing on. We understand that. But this provides the diversity for everybody. And I like, because it has the buy-in from students such as yourself. So y'all can stop emailing us. We have heard your voice. We hear you. I love this. I appreciate you doing this. And I think for those kids who have been in situations where it has kind of put them in a precarious situation because of the way that they were dressed or because of the way that their hair was, or because of, you know, their, their, maybe their height or weight issues, that things look different on people, but another person has the same item on, but because you have it on, it's a dress code issue. I think we have to get away from that type of stuff. Because again, as a former administrator, you hate to make that call when you see someone else with the same item on. And for my, like I said, for the diversity of not just color, but all orientations, I love this because I think we are a district and we pride ourselves be, of being a district that, that champions diversity. We're not trying to take people back to the dark ages. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The board, this policy and the associated administrative rule was provided to us on June 23rd with a note to contact Dr. Davis by the close of business on Tuesday, July 5th for specific questions. And I emailed him on, and I did a reply to him and his assistant on June 27th. And some of the comments that I have, first of all, the preface is that there is no perfect world that we live in, no perfect policy, no perfect law. What you're trying to do is do the very best you can with your intentions. In the email that I sent, when I did respond with my comments, I told them that I appreciate the language was dispensing of such terms as distraction and, you know, immediately. There were things that were very sensitive in that administrative rule if you took the time to read it. It was talking about, you know, removing students, you know, talking to them to the side, not embarrassing them immediately, being discreet about how you approach people. And it was a very sensitive, detailed oriented. And I had my questions about some of the, some of, some of the questions that I had, I've got answers to already. But I thought it was very sensitive. Is there a deep, as a parent, you know, having kids, having children who came to this district, my daughter was tall. So the same skirt that she wore could be worn on her short mom. And she would be more likely to have been cited for a dress code violation for a skirt that wasn't short. It was just that she's tall. And Mr. Manning, I think we've discussed some similar things like that before. So I appreciate, as a parent, the fact that the administrative rule and, and the details that are there. And I'm sure it won't be perfect for everyone, no, no policy is. But I appreciate the thoughtfulness that's been taken into allowing parents to work with those, those differences and those sensitivities that in the past would have been an immediate dress code violation. I can remember a time when there, you know, there was to be no headwear, you know, no, no, nothing on the head in schools, period. It is 2022 and that we, we should be respective of people who have adornments that are on their head for religious reasons. So if we went by just, you know, cut and dry what we've always done, then you would be excluding students who have their hair covered for religious reasons. So I very much appreciated the thought and the detail. And I said that in my email to you on June 27th that went in to the administrative rule. And for that reason and others, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Caution Parker?
In 1998, I was promoted from Dent Middle School as serving as principal to the district office as chief administrative staff and then to deputy superintendent. And one thing that, the first thing I had to deal with here was the dress code. And one thing that, um, the first thing I had to deal with here was the dress code. And we had a board member, um, Mike Montgomery, who was a parent of mine at, at Dent Middle School, who loved the dress code that we had at Dent and wanted me to implement that dress code district-wide. Well, I, I, I worked hard on that. Finally, I told him it was a losing battle. It was a losing battle. Um, dealing with a lot of things. Number one, children were not allowed to wear flip flops to school. Well, kids would get the flip flops and put little decorative things on them and tell me they're not flip flops, they're sandals. I mean, who am I to argue with, with that? But what I like about this, and I really do like about this, is the involvement of so many groups of people, parents, administrators, teachers, and especially students. And as you recall, it hasn't been that long ago, Mr. Manning, that a certain child brought up a dress code issue to us from, was, she didn't middle school at that time? She was in Dent Middle School, so I'll never forget that. But, 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 uh, when it comes to, to dress codes, that's always an issue. That is always an issue, no matter what. And everyone's not going to be happy. Everyone's not going to be satisfied. You do the best you can with the child you have and raise your child the way you see fit and just move on for that. But to, to change a dress code to fit how you believe your child should go to school, I think is, is, is very wrong. But I just, I like the way that this whole, this whole, um, whole issue of the dress code has come about and all the people that have been involved. And, and I think that's a fair representation. I like it.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Manning. And I do appreciate everyone's efforts and the collaboration that's been put together to, um, put this new policy together. Um, I'm inclined to like the old policy still, just because to me it seems to express more expectations of our students. When we're thinking about how we impact our students' lives, um, one of the things that we need to do is prepare them for life after school. And to me, you know, most jobs that people have, there's some type of dress code, whether you're working even as teenagers, McDonald's, you know, UPS, there are certain expectations of how people should dress. My first question is, what is the expectation of the teacher or what is the teacher role in enforcing this new policy?
The enforcement side of it, Ms. Agostini, does not change from the standpoint of what it currently is. If a teacher believes that a student is in violation of the dress code, they would, um, take that to the administrator in charge for, um, that particular student or grade level.
All right. And I do have the administrative rule here. So I had a couple of questions and I'm looking at the students must wear in terms of the tops, a shirt, blouse, sweater, sweatshirt, tank, et cetera, with fabric in the front, back, and on the sides under the arms. Does that include straps? Can I now wear a strapless top as a female?
You could wear a strapless top, yes ma'am.
So that's acceptable?
Under the administrative rule as proposed, yes ma'am.
Okay. Then we're looking about private parts. Students must not wear attire that shows private parts and includes nipples, genitals, buttocks. Private parts must be covered by clothing that is opaque, not able to be seen through, but cleavage is okay.
As long as it does not show nipples, there could be some cleavage that would not be a violation of the dress code. And part of the consideration, um, Ms. Agostini, and working on the language, especially of the administrative rule, is trying to find words that fit a majority of the situations that may come about. Depending on how a young woman is built and the size of her breasts, we run into the problem that's been expressed of a top that fits one person that shows no cleavage on another person may show some cleavage. And I don't believe we have any administrators in our district that we want to put in a position of having to measure how much cleavage is showing. And so we felt like, let's leave the consideration of that to the parents and, um, have parents exercise their parental discretion about what's appropriate for their children. And as long as we are able to operate schools, classes can continue, teaching and learning can take place. That would not be a matter that would be subject to a dress code violation.
Okay. And then I have a concern when I'm looking at the policy. It states, in relation to student attire, the district believes, colon, and one of them is, um, the student should be able to express, or excuse me, students should be able to dress in a manner that expresses their individuality without fear of unnecessary discipline or body shaming. But then it goes on at the last sentence of this, the administration will make the final judgment on the appropriateness of a student's attire. Now that could potentially be body shaming.
Well, I think the way that any dress code violation is handled by an administrator can avoid body shaming. Um, and so someone has to make the final decision. And so the final decision rests with the administration. But the administration has the direction that they should not body shame a student. So if someone sees a student and believes them to be in violation of the dress code, they should not call them out in the hallway and say, you have on something that's inappropriate in the dress code. You need to go to the office. You would instead pull the student aside, speak with them privately, um, explain what the concern is and refer them to the administration. And then the administration would likewise, with that same level of sensitivity, talk with the student if it is something that they believe to be a violation of the dress code.
And then I appreciate your answer. Students at the discretion of the principal or her designee may be asked briefly to leave the classroom to change clothes or to cover or remove attire that does not comply with the policy. Again, is this not body shaming when you're asking somebody to? And I, I appreciate that you're taking them aside, that you're taking them out of the classroom and it's a one-on-one conversation. But the perception is still going to be that it's body shaming.
I'm not sure that there's any way to put into words to tell how to handle that situation with every student where it might come up. Um, we never know who might feel ashamed because of something that's been said to them about their attire. What we're seeking to do is to try to avoid that to the best of our abilities and to limit the time a student is away from class to the best of our abilities so that they're not losing instructional time. A student may choose to ask a parent to bring them something from home to change in. If it's been handled appropriately, most students would not know why the student went to the office and would not know why they are now in a change of clothes that's different unless the student themselves tells someone. And in that case, we can't control what the student says to another person about why I've changed clothes. What we're seeking to do is to try to preserve respect and dignity to the best that we can do.
Uh, and I appreciate that answer too. And I guess my final question is, and this was just a personal experience that we had with a foreign exchange student years ago who was dress coded and was made to by an administrator go down and put on scrubs. Now, nobody saw the interaction between the administrator and the student. But it definitely was clear when the student showed up in scrubs, what had just taken place. Is that something that we still practice of sending kids down and changing into scrubs or is that process or practice, um, no longer existent?
To answer that, um, you asking, are we still doing that? Um, as we were just talking just now and that we, matter of fact, we looked at our student and asked, is that being done at this time? And she said she's never heard of that being done. Not saying that it hadn't been done in the past and all. But again, as we move with this policy, we are looking at putting things in place where people are sensitive to what's going on with students and building our relationships with both our students and our parents to make sure that things like that don't happen. Uh, we are not supplying a closet for changing of clothes, anything like that. That's why what Dr. Grant just said, we are leaving it with administration to go ahead and be able to work with our students and our parents to address these, these issues when they arise.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry. I've already got a couple other folks that wanted to say something first. Ms. Agostini, are you, you finished?
I'm finished for now. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Ms. McFadden had asked to speak first.
Okay, yes, guys. A couple of things. Thank y'all so much for working on this, but I absolutely appreciate the hat situation. If you're not going to violate kids for hats, because my boys like to wear hats and so that's a great thing. I'm for that. However, I am concerned about the topless or sleeveless tops and the amount of breasts that can be shown because you may have a more obese in the breast young lady who it won't violate, but you'll have another young lady who it fits differently. So now you're just flipping the story. So it might fit her one way, but it'll fit her a more seductive way in school. If you're saying that almost all of the breasts can show but the nipples, they will run with it. And some students will. And they're already trying to. I think the policy as it stands helps the students to choose, you know, and the parents as well, you know, a dignified way to wear their clothing. If we're saying they can come into school without straps, they're going to come into school without straps. You know, my daughter's a cheerleader and I always have to measure that skirt, you know, to get it down a little bit longer. You know, those kinds of things. I'm just concerned that we're going to be dealing with more violations because if there's no link to that skirt that we're saying, don't wear it. If we're saying, wear it, they're gonna wear it. And we don't know how short. How are you going to say that this person's skirt is not too short, but this person's is? It's the same situation. The only difference is that we're flipping that story. Um, I'm very concerned with that because if they want to change those clothes, have you seen the clothes in the stores for teenagers? Those skirts are about this long. That's it. You're not covering anything with that. And they're going to try and say, well, it's not a school cu- dress code. We can wear it as long, it's not too short. You can't see the, the undercut of my bottom. You can't see that. It's okay. But while they're walking, you can see that. I think we need to be careful because we're talking about teenagers and hormones in schools. I think we need to make sure that we're telling our girls, you can't have nothing showing up here. We need to tell our boys, you can wear a hat, but you need to pull your pants up and not change the standard on what we're saying as adults is what we expect for our children.
Dr. Scott, then I'm, I'm gonna.
Well, I wanted to go at the Dr. Davis because he may say something and I don't have to say anything. So I want to defer to Dr. Davis first and then if he doesn't mention what I was thinking, then I'll.
Dr. Scott, I kind of locked eyes that we've both been in high school. So we, we know that, um, there may have been a practice or some practices where administrators may have had students go down and put on, uh, attire um, or change their attire and offer them the opportunity. I don't know of a situation where a student was forced to do that. Um, but given options to change. Um, there are some students who refuse to change with, of the current dress code issue. And so, but we offer them the opportunity. Um, do you want to put on gym shorts over your pants if your pants were inappropriate? Do you want to put on a T-shirt? We have a T-shirt for you to put on a T-shirt, a gym T-shirt or something in order for you to be compliant. The, the attempt is to get the student back in class as quickly as possible with the, with the least minimum, with the minimum amount of distraction and disruption. Now, what the attempt is to try to do those things without embarrassing or, um, shaming or not being inclusive of students, uh, and their ability to express themselves. Uh, I would say that i- if you have been in a school, uh, recently, um, and seen dress code attire, uh, or kids and students and what they're wearing, um, I think some of the, what the board members are saying, there are million challenges when it comes to what can be purchased at school, what can be purchased in stores and what students wear. We're not trying to get into that. Uh, we're actually trying to avoid, um, a lot of the interactions that are negative as a result of the students' dress code attire because we are enforcing or trying to enforce some, um, policies and understandings of, of, of practices, of trying to enforce something that, you know, we have become accustomed to. I, I'll say this and give this and stop and allow board members to continue. There was an article that was written several years ago, um, or a news article that I saw, I should say, written in the nineteen seventies. It was Spring Valley High School, nineteen seventy article, student newspaper. And on the front cover of the student newspaper were students who were dressed in what they call hot pants. Have you been around long enough to know what hot pants and knee-high boots were in the seventies? That was appropriate in nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-one, seventy-two at Spring Valley High School. That was, that was an appropriate dress attire at the school at that time. It has gotten more restrictive as society has become more inclusive and, and, and different. So the things that a sixteen, seventeen-year-old were able to, because remember now in that time as well, you could smoke on campus. There was a designated smoking location on campus, um, in, in high schools all across the country until the, the. I think we're getting to this idea of trying to parent beyond our ability of parent of telling students what they should and should not wear, what they, how they should and should not express themselves based on our values. What we're trying to do is create a, a dress code that is inclusive of all students, but also limits their ability to be egregious and outrageous in their attire. We're not looking at creating a dress code, uh, in our school just where students can simply walk around and wear exactly what they want and how they want to, to wear those things. And if we see that these things are inappropriate, administration does reserve the right to stop. The students say, I think this is inappropriate and, or I, I think you need to, your, your dress is inappropriate. So we need to maybe have a conversation with your parents and if we need to go back and then revisit some things, we do. I, I think Dr. Caution Parker made a great example. I explicitly remember more, uh, this extreme discuss, as long as discussion about flip flops. About, about flip flops in Richland School District two. And should a student wear flip? Now, if you took sandals away today, whether they're Jack Rogers, whether they're Tory Birches, but ten years ago, Tory Birches would have been considered inappropriate in Richland School District two. Jack Rogers sandals would have been considered inappropriate in Richland School District two, ten years ago. There are some other things in our dress code that we need to begin to examine and make sure that we are not being overly punitive to students, um, because of our, um, perception or our beliefs about what and what they should and shouldn't wear and when they should wear. I think administrators are, are capable enough of making those decisions. And if something is inappropriate, we will address those things. And if we need to come back and revisit it and add it to the administrative rule because we didn't have the foresight and we didn't, it wasn't perfect from the beginning, then it'll be a continuous learning process.
Dr. Scott, did that address your issues?
It did because mainly I wanted to just make sure that students are not being punished
Yes.
or shamed because of the attire. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey.
Just, just a comment and, and Dr. Davis touched a little bit on that. I remember having been a parent in the district for, oh gosh, decades and, and, and gone, you know, school improvement council and PTSO meetings and all and been engaged and, and listening to, um, you know, concerns and all that there were of teachers and administrators. I don't think there's an in, an overarching influx of dress code violations. At the end of the day, I don't villainize our students and think that students are out here, they're all out to come to school half naked and all. I don't think that's the case. I think that, um, I appreciate the collaborative, um, attempt to have parents and students and their schools involved in that process. I respect our teachers. I don't want us to create an environment where we are micromanaging from the board to the point where our, our teachers, um, are pigeonholed in the decisions that they make with regard to this. Our administrators aren't trusted to make appropriate decisions. I trust our teachers and our administrators to make appropriate decisions where this is involved. The administrative rule as it reads is, is, um, granting a collaborative environment between students and teachers because I think that at the end of the day, um, students want to, we want our students, we all have the same, uh, end goal and game, in, in, in mind. We want to have an environment where, uh, education takes place, quality education takes place. And I think this policy, um, allows for that. Uh, is it perfect? Does there need to be some tweaking? We'll see in the future as, as policies are tweaked over time. But, um, I do trust our teachers. I do trust our administrators and, um, students, I think, are well-intentioned. No student is perfect. There is no perfect company. There are no perfect employees. There are no perfect, you know, any organization, there's not perfection. But I think the intent behind this policy and the administrative rule is understood and I'm absolutely on board. And Ms. Millburn, I appreciate you being here tonight. My students were all, my kids were also Blazers and, um, my daughter actually wrote a letter to her, um, school principal at the time, years ago, about, and, and it was, I think it was a district policy, not a school policy, about, um, things like the dress, the dress policy, like your daughter, Mr. Manning, you know? Um, she was never going to be in compliance of making sure a skirt is no more than three inches. What? She's tall. You know, and things of that nature and talking about how females. of that nature and talking about how females and males may be impacted differently from the policies that were written at that time. So I appreciate you being here and being proactive and you've got support from your teachers as well. I love to see that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, I'm going to recognize Dr. Holmes. If Dr. Caution Parker wants a second try, everybody else has had two turns. So I'm going to make a few comments and then we're going to move on to the next item. So Dr. Holmes?
I'll be brief. I just want to say that I'm going to date myself here. I was at Spring Valley High School, not in the 70s, but early 80s, when we wore, we wore some things. We really did. We had, we had the short skirts. We had, and Dr. Davis is absolutely correct. Back at Spring Valley High School, which was, we had a blast at Spring Valley High School, we wore different items that were now sometime be deemed inappropriate because of the time. So I'm just, I'm so glad that we're having this discussion again. So glad that you're here, young lady, because you have to move with the times and we have to make sure that we're being inclusive. But I just wanted to co-sign that, yes, Dr. Davis, at Spring Valley High School, we wore miniskirts. We did wear the shorts with the boots. And one time it was the cowboy boots. Then you came, that came next. We had the shorts with the cowboy boots. That was in fashion back there. So I just wanted to co-sign on that.
Dr. Caution Parker, did you want to say anything additional? You're good. You're good. Okay. Yeah. Thank you again for the hard work. Many of you who have been around
will remember, one of my worst losses as a board member for a desire to see a policy changed was with the dress code. I went down six to one and I was not very happy about it at the time, if I remember correctly. But we have heard from a lot of students, particularly young women. I remember when the last time we addressed this issue, we had numerous groups of young ladies, middle school, high school, that came to talk to us, spoke out at public participation, sent us letters. I've received numerous emails from parents frustrated with their young girls. I've been in that situation and I can promise you, my daughter is extremely modest, but somehow find a way to violate the dress code even with her modesty. And she was, you know, when we say we try not to embarrass folks, she was embarrassed just because she was called out, not because of the way it was done or anything, just the fact that it was an issue and she never gets in trouble. So that really caused some strife for her. So I think it's just difficult when you violate that. You try to do it in the best way possible, as you all stated. I would like for us, Dr. Davis, I know we don't vote on the administrative rule, but I would like for the administrative rule to be posted along with the policy when we come to it. So again, we won't vote on that, but I think that to make sure that it's posted where everyone can see it because I do think it addresses some things. I heard, Dr. Scott, you talked about in the midriff, it addresses the midriff in this, in the administrative rule. So I think it does, folks need to see how those two tie together and exactly how that works. So I appreciate you posting that so we have kind of full transparency into the two components of it. And I do think it's time for us. And, you know, I hear the plea about we need to teach students about the workplace, but if any of you have driven through the University of South Carolina campus recently, I would argue that they are also preparing students for a workplace. Yet I see dress that would never fly at all, even within our new administrative rule, that would never fly. And those students are attending classes with that dress. You see them with their backpacks going between classes. So I, I do think it's time for us to grow and change with the times and I'm excited that we're here. Young lady, thank you for your work. Thanks for coming in front of us when you could probably be doing a lot of other amazing things in your life. But we appreciate you coming and seeing the process and being part of it with us. So thank you very much. With that, we are going to move on now to our next item, which is approval of the draft agenda for August 9, 2022. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board and to our community as president and those that are watching, we have the draft agenda for the August 9, 2022 regular scheduled board meeting. This is the first board meeting in the month of August with the call to order for at 5:30 where we will go and take a vote to go into executive session. Our executive session items as drafted at this time will be student appeals and student admissions to the district's adult education program. We'll come out of the executive session at 6:30 where we will start our public session. In public session, we have the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. We'll have the approval of the agenda as well as approval of the consent agenda, followed by our first public participation, then followed by our voting on executive session items, which includes the student appeals. Items 8.1, old business action requested will be the policy revision approval for policy JICA, student dress code articles and displays. New business, no action requested, 9.1 will be the Richland 2 highlights. And 10.1, the will be our draft agenda items for September the 13th. This will be followed by the approval of those draft agenda items, public participation 2, if needed, board and superintendent comments, executive session 2, if needed, voting on items from executive session 2, if needed. If not, we'll go from board superintendent comments to 16.1, adjournment.
Board members, questions or comments regarding this draft agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
When is the appropriate time to amend the agenda?
If you would like to make a motion, now's the time.
Thank you. I would like to amend the agenda to add for discussion policy JKE expulsion of students and its administrative rule, JKER.
Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Scott. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Ms. Agostini?
Yes, and I had requested this at the last meeting for us to go over and talk about the expulsion of students. My biggest concern is under the hearing procedure where it states the administrator and the student or the representatives will be allowed to present witnesses or witness statements and within the discretion of the hearing officer cross-examine the other party's witnesses. The hearing officer may ask the witness questions as well. We had, and I was told that nobody received, well, from the people that spoke, two of my colleagues and our superintendent, that I was the only one to receive information. I forwarded to all of you the emails that were sent to us because the board did receive an email, the superintendent received and our board chair, an email from me where I responded that on the May 30th, I responded to the questionnaire or the parent who sent it out saying that I had shared the email with Dr. Davis for administration to respond. I'm concerned that we tell these families when their students come that they can examine or question the witnesses and yet we don't permit it. So I would like a discussion on these policies.
So Ms. Agostini, are you asking to amend the policy or are you asking for a...
I would like a discussion.
Are you trying to discuss the fact that you feel we're not adhering to a policy?
No, I would like to discuss the policy first to gain understanding of what it is with the potential of amending the policies.
So Ms. Agostini, have you sat down and talked with administration one-on-one about your concerns and the policy?
Well, I tried to have that. I sent an email and got no response from our superintendent. So no, I haven't. And you received the email, Mr. Manning, as did all of our board and our superintendent, and I've heard nothing. I asked to have it done here and part of the concern is from what these, the notes from the parents have been, is that they were told by the hearing officer or somebody in that group, I can't state specifically, but they were told that the procedures were being changed. And again, these procedures were written in 2010. So no, to your point, I have not sat down, but I have requested information or for administration to respond, and I don't believe they have. And I do think it's something that needs to be addressed.
And if I didn't respond, I apologize. I think everyone who sent me emails has seen I've tried to be diligent about responses. So there may have just been, I've had a deluge of requests and it may have gotten lost in that. So I apologize. But I would, we can take the vote on it, but I would just ask that there be a discussion with administration to make sure that there's not some sort of one-off issue or other. Dr. Davis, you want to respond?
If I'm not mistaken, the policy JKE doesn't speak specifically to allowing witnesses to be questioned by the accused or the person who committed an act that's up for expulsion. The administrative, there may be an administrative rule or I may need to go back and revisit that policy to see if the policy actually states that you would have an opportunity to question a witness. But according to the policy, the policy was issued, the last time that policy was revisited was January 1, I'm sorry, January 2020. And looking at policy JKE expulsion of students, I don't know if the, that procedure is a part of the policy, but it may be a part of the administrative rule. Administrative rule is developed by district administrators. And just to speak frankly, if that is something that we decide to do, then my recommendation would be that you clearly just take it out that they don't have the option to do that. Because I would not put a student in front of an accused individual in a hearing for to have that parent or lawyer question that student about an incident that took place on campus. That's the reason why we do that is to protect that student. They write a statement. The statements are anonymous and they're anonymous for a reason. Or I should say, they're not anonymous. We redact the name of the person who's writing the statement. But I would not put a student in front of a student who possibly could have an attorney question that student in a hearing.
Okay, what I would like...
Mr. Manning, may I add something?
If you, I will get back to you, but hold on one second for me. Ms. Agostini, will you just restate your motion one more time for me? I'm sorry, just so that Ms. Lewis needs to make sure she has it correct.
Thank you. I move to add to the agenda, policy JKE expulsion of students and JKER, the administrative rule.
Okay, and that was seconded...
For discussion.
And that was seconded by Dr. Scott, is that correct? Dr. Scott, you seconded it? Okay. Dr. Scott, go ahead with your discussion.
Yes, and that was going to be my comment to Dr. Davis. That is written in the administrative rule, which I do not support, and that's nothing that we do. So we do need to have that discussion to immediately move that because in the future, we could have parents challenging us on this. So it is a part of the administrative rule, if you go back to look at that, that we do allow parents to question students and that's not our practice. So we do need to look at that ASAP and make some revisions to it.
Okay, so I have a motion from Ms. Agostini. I have a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
And to be clear, we don't, administration does administrative rules, right?
Right.
Okay.
That's correct.
So we can have a discussion about it, but that's not a voteable item because...
The policy is what the rule is not. The policy and administrative rule are two different things. The administrative rule doesn't require the vote. That can be directions from, you know, from the board, something for us to review, to bring back to you all for your, you know, to share with you what we think. I haven't spoken to, I haven't spoken to legal about that. I don't know what the conditions are surrounding those types of things because it has been in place for a while, that whole idea that a person could have access, could question someone. But we have never allowed that. And to my knowledge, we would never allow a parent to question another minor without that parent's minor, that parent agreeing to that. And we definitely wouldn't allow a situation. And some of our hearings, we have attorneys and we wouldn't allow attorneys to question a student. So that, we have never allowed that to happen. So whether that needs to come out of administrative rule, we can take a look at that and see if that is indeed something that we are able to do and we can do that, then we can immediately, since we don't practice, as Dr. Scott said, we can immediately take that out of administrative rule, which does not require a vote.
Okay. Ms. Agostini?
All right. I was just going to comment. First of all, Mr. Manning, when you said that you've been bombarded with emails, well, and I appreciate that, you were adamant that you had not received any communications from anybody in the community about the concerns. And again, I thank Dr. Scott for saying that. That's exactly what I read from when we opened up this discussion, was from the administrative rule where it does state that witnesses can be questioned and that's part of the information that is sent out to these students that go into hearings, that the witnesses can be questioned. So yes, I would like to have it removed.
Okay.
Just as, just one, like, just as it says can be, does not say will be. So it is at a discretion, but we do not allow it. And I agree, if that is an issue of contention, it is such a simple fix, we can make a simple fix without a lengthy discussion and...
Okay, Dr. Holmes, and then we're going to, I'm going to take the vote. Dr. Holmes?
Okay, I agree with the fact that if that's in there, that does need to come out because I am not in favor of people outside, people questioning other people's children because I know that can lead to other legal issues. But I thank you also, Dr. Davis, that you're stating that there's no need to revisit the whole thing. If that particular statement can be taken out without a lengthy discussion, I'm in favor of that being taken out and then that would be the end of it. But I do think that that is something that does need to come out. If that's in there, let's remove that and let's move on. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll take the vote. Do you need a hand vote, Christine, or we can do electronic? Okay.
I voted. It says that I can change my vote if I need to.
Okay. Did you get my vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so this is, your vote still stands for a discussion on it, Ms. Agostini, correct? You still want a discussion or you...
Yes, I do.
Add it to the agenda? Oh, okay.
Okay. Motion passes five yes, two no. So that'll be added to the, to that agenda for August. Any other motions?
To pass the agenda?
Yeah, I know, but I was asking if there were any other secondary, if there were any other additions to the agenda before I vote on the agenda with the change. Okay. So now I'll move on to approval of the draft agenda with the secondary motion that was added on for policy JKE with the administrative rule. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Manning?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the draft agenda items for August 9, 2022 with the added agenda item.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Any discussion? With no discuss, yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini?
I got kicked out, so I'm going to have to hand vote. I'm trying to, I can't get back on.
Can we just all hand vote on this? Everybody in favor? If you'll raise your hands high, please. Passes unanimously. At this time, we have no second public participation. No one signed up. We will do board and superintendent comments. I will start with Ms. Agostini.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Caution Parker?
Again, Dr. Davis, deep appreciation for the highlights for Richland School District 2. And I'd just like to congratulate Cappy. And when I met Cappy back in 1979, she was Cappy Cannon, a student at USC, and did a lot of her, her part-time job was being a substitute teacher. And she would substitute for me and for Charlene Herring over at EL Wright. And that's how we met her years and years ago. And to see her come to this point where she's retiring as the principal and she's done so well, my hat's off to her and congratulations to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Dr. Holmes?
Yes, I'd like to say congratulations to Brianna from Westwood High School for her track championship. And I'd also like to say to Dr. Steph, congratulations. And also, I'd like to say I'm so pleased about the South Carolina State University dual enrollment program. I love that and I appreciate you bringing that to our district because that's important. That brings an HBCU, another HBCU to the area for our students to have dual credit from. So with that, I would just say good night and have a pleasant summer.
Thank you. Dr. Scott?
Everyone just have a good night. Thank you.
Ms. McFadden?
I wanted to say that SOAR started and my kids are enjoying it. They came home from, I guess, school is what I'm going to call it. And they were asleep most of the afternoon. So I would say for the students in SOAR and the teachers that are teaching during the summer and getting up and being in school during the summer, thank you guys so much. My kids are having a great time. And I just want to say thank y'all for all the work that we did this whole school year and so look forward again to a new school year. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just reiterating that board highlights, Dr. Davis, Dr. Caution Parker, I won't reiterate, you know, the congratulations to Dr. Steck. Thank you for reminding students of the summer food program for families who need meals this summer. I hope you'll share that information. And just hope everyone's having a pleasant summer, safe, and that I hope that your joys are outweighing your unpleasantries. And so for those who have chosen to be here tonight, thank you. For those who've got to be here, we appreciate the work you do. the work you do. Have a wonderful evening. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. In Richland Two, we continue to strive to provide premier learning experiences for our students. And striving to provide premier learning experiences for our students, we continue to focus on safety and security for our students. I just want to reiterate for those that are watching who may go back and review this, and remind them that Richland Two was at the forefront of ensuring that we create a safe and secure learning environment for our students. In 2018, when we passed a significant bond referendum, which allowed us to upgrade our school facilities and make them as twenty-first century safe as it relates to outside intruders in our schools. We do have an issue and a challenge that are facing all schools in this, in this country, and even in the state. How do we minimize and mitigate internal threats in our schools? And we are diligently working on that. But I want to make sure that our families know that we have put a lot of effort and energy and resources behind ensuring that our schools are safe. In order to give them that premier education experience, we need to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers. But it's not just about pay. We have to create a culture and sustain a culture and environment where teachers want to come to our school district and want to stay in our school district. And we have to work on that as an administrative team, as a community that embraces their teachers and support their teachers, not vilify their teachers, but support them and stand behind them, because teaching is a tough job, but it's an important job, and is a worthy profession. So, when your teachers reach out to you and want to share information with you and collaborate with you, let's have a collaborative and communal spirit as we move into the next school year to ensure that we get to retain, we all have a role in retaining high-quality teachers in our school district. But I have to commend this board again publicly at being at the forefront once again in teacher pay. And yes, other school districts have caught up, but that doesn't mean that we can't run just a little bit faster. But we were limited this year, and I'll reemphasize for our teachers. The next time we're doing our budget, and we have a, we talking about what we need in resources, we need to hear from you at that time as well, because we did present a budget that what we needed to be able to compensate our teachers in our community, but we weren't able to get that passed through. And so, what we're operating on is the zero millage, and this is what we have, and this is what we're doing our very best to do. And I know that may not come across well for some members, but that's okay, because my chief responsibility is to advocate for the students in Richland School District Two and the teachers, employees, and families in Richland School District Two, and we need to make sure that we continue to do that. I want to thank this board for your continued support of education in the school district. Thank you for outstanding meeting tonight. We got a lot accomplished, a lot of meaningful things were accomplished, and I think you did, we did a phenomenal job of taking on and tackling some tough issues tonight. But thank you all so much for your commitment to our students, and again, to my staff for all the work that you do. There's a lot of work between board meetings to get things prepared and have things ready to be able to present to the board and to our community. So, continued support to you and to our administrators and teachers. We look forward to you all returning back to school. I know that sounds like it's a long, a long way off, but it's not. So, we'll be back. Administrative in-service, I believe, is next week. So, we'll be preparing to bring our administrators back in preparation for next school year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I wanted to recognize Tommy Carter, if you want to stand up, our new IT lead now that Tom Kramer. It was interesting, because I talked to Tom earlier. He said, well, Tom and I worked together twenty-five years, so it's just weird not having him around, because we've been together for so long. So, welcome to the position. We certainly are a leader in technology in this district, and you have your hands full with the work that you and your team do for our students and for our district. And I want to reiterate a little bit of what Dr. Davis said, and you heard Ms. McFadden earlier say that I committed to having a meeting, and I have absolutely committed that we will have budget meetings this year. I think we're going to need to do a little bit of a head run into not only what we face this year, but coming into next year. We've, Dr. Davis, is this the fourth year we've had zero mill increase?
It is the fourth year we've done a zero mill increase.
And, and so, when we have teachers asking us for pay increases for us to stay competitive, we certainly want to be responsible with the monies we have. But as somebody said earlier, we don't want to cut teachers. Ninety percent of our budget comes from staff. So, when we say, well, you need to live within your means, we need to find ways to cut money so that we can give teachers pay increases, the only way to cut money is to cut positions to have money to give to other positions. So, we're kind of running into some headwinds where we may need to ask for a millage increase in order to stay competitive with pay. And I think that that discussion can't just happen when we get to the budget cycle. I think it's something that we need to have discussions about. Go headlong, we're not an autonomous board, we can't make that decision. And we will need buy-in from the community in order if that is what the community and what our staff wants and what our needs are to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers. As Mr. Kelly said, the most important crucial asset to learning in a student's life, we're going to have to work together to figure out how to do that. And I think that likely will include some sort of tax increase in the near future, if we're really committed to that. So, I think we need to work together, and I look forward to having those discussions so that we can kind of do that along the way. Sorry, Dr. Miley and Ms. Allen for extra meetings to discuss that, but it's a critical function. We are committed to safety. We'll continue to have safety meetings. I do think we need to determine what it is we need before we commit more resources to that. We, I think we can work together, hopefully, to find ways to do the things we need to do, but we've got to decide what those are. And we haven't decided as a board yet what we are committed to providing the resources to. I think that we need a lot of discussion, because we need to make those decisions so that we can start to implement and get those things in action. And Dr. Davis, I appreciate your, your administrative commitment to those functions. Otherwise, I appreciate my, my first meeting as chair again going smoothly. We got a lot accomplished tonight. Thank you, everyone. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, move to adjourn the meeting.
Motion made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Everyone in favor, raise your hands high. And it's unanimous. Thank you very much.